Do that, Matt.
Okay, this is a meeting of the Northern York County School District Board of Directors, and it is being recorded, and the recording has started.
Okay, thank you. Welcome to our May voting meeting for the Northern York County School District Board of Directors. We will take a roll call at this point. Mrs. Ross?
Mr. Barnett.
Here.
Mrs. Eichelberger?
Here.
Mr. Hulaki?
Here.
Mrs. Hoferter?
Here.
Mrs. Markle?
Here.
Dr. McLean?
Here.
Mr. Rudy?
Here.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Here.
And Mr. Seacrest?
Here.
Okay, everyone is here. All right, would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, indivisible, and just as a whole.
Thank you. As usual, all voting will be done by roll call this evening, and again, I will ask you to go third person. As you make motions or second, please identify yourself for the minutes. So I would accept a motion for approval of the minutes from the April 28 school board meeting.
This is Ann, so moved.
This is Beth, second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, Mrs. Ross?
Mr. Barnett?
Yes.
Mrs. Eichelberger?
Yes.
Mr. Hulaki?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoferter?
Yes.
Mrs. Markle?
Yes.
Dr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
Minutes approved.
All right, and I would accept a motion for approval of tonight's agenda.
This is Ann, so moved.
This is Beth, second.
You have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, this is Alyssa. I would like to make a motion to vote for Letter C under Section 4 Budget and Finance separately as a roll call vote.
Do we have a second on that?
This is Jamie, I second.
We have a motion and a second to break Item C out from Number 4 of the Budget and Finance Committee Meeting. Any discussion on this? Okay, Mrs. Ross?
Mr. Barnett?
Yes.
Mrs. Eichelberger?
Yes.
Mr. Hulaki?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoferter?
Yes.
Mrs. Markle?
Yes.
Dr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, so make note of that, Greg. All right, now is the time that we do recognition of the pub public. We would ask you to please give your name and address for the record. Citizens' comments or questions are welcome. We ask you to limit them to five minutes per presenter. Questions and comments concerning individual staff members, students, or your own children's problems will not be addressed at a public meeting. Your comments will be given consideration for the board. However, the board may choose to not provide a response on your issue this evening. Okay?
Hi, Mr. Beals, this is Matt. When you were explaining how comment would work tonight, that's when you dropped off. Did you maybe want to explain that again?
Yeah, absolutely. So if any, any public member right now wishes to share with the board, you can raise your hand. The raise your hand icon would be in the bar in the middle. You can also unmute yourself. Just to try to keep things organized, we wanted to make sure we allowed each person from the community willing to speak to speak this evening.
Anyone, Mr. Beals?
At this point, I'm not seeing anyone.
Jason, on my screen, it shows two hands up. By the thirty-seven.
One, one is Mrs. Markle.
Okay.
Sorry, I don't know what I did.
That's okay, high five right back to you.
Okay.
All right. Looking down through, I don't see anyone else that has their hand raised. There is nothing in the chat either.
Okay.
I believe Molly Atkinson has raised her hand.
Yes.
Yes. Hi, I'm Molly Atkinson, 29 Cold Springs Road, Diltsburg, PA, 17019. I just wanted to speak a little bit on behalf of the budget item of moving the support staff to ESS. I just want to urge all members to think about not just the money, but also be a voice for the Northern York County School District staff and students. I can tell you by just in my classroom, I've been in the school district for seven years now, and I have not had a school board member or administrator come into my classroom to see the work that these aides have been doing. So I'm just very passionate that our aides really need someone to stick up for them, and as a teacher, I feel like it's my responsibility to help them as much as possible. Our aides are absolutely priceless and should be treated as such. I know that the number of savings is very, very large compared to some of the other items, but our full-time aides are definitely worth every penny and more than what they currently are even worth. I know there's not a lot of time to come up with another plan, but I do hope that you are still willing in this last month to listen to other ideas, get creative, and work with the staff to come up with additional options. The functionality of our schools definitely depend on it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Molly.
I think I put my hand up.
Okay, go ahead.
Oh, yes, Sherry Albert, Diltsburg Elementary. I live at 214 Whiskey Springs Road, Diltsburg, Pennsylvania, 17019. Thank you, Molly, for being a voice for us this evening. I'm disappointed that we've come to this phase, that you have, you have extended all of our letters, and I know, I appreciate Kent for responding to me. I appreciate him for multiple letters that he has responded to. I don't know if he's the only one that has responded. I'm a little disappointed, but I don't know some of you on the board, but I just want to be a voice that, that we are frustrated and disappointed in the district. I've been with the district for all but twenty years, and I probably will have to leave, and that really saddens me, and all the other twenty-six voices that really just like you to see if you can come up with another proposal. I do understand that it is late, but I think it's important. I think the district will go downhill, and that you just don't really have, how much that we all give. I know you say you do, and it's not about the money, but I just see, I just see this as not so much just a loss for us and our families, but a loss for the district. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Sherry.
Brenda, go ahead.
Uh, yeah. Yep, my name is Brenda Heisey, and I live at 451 Capitol Hill Road, Diltsburg, PA. I too have been an aide at the district for twenty-five years, and I think I want to speak just because it's, it's way beyond what, about a job for me. I've had parents that have reached out and just shared their thoughts and thanked me for all that I've done, and I appreciate that so much. I just am kind of frustrated that the district has not really recognized that in all that we do. And I, one of the things that's also very frustrating to me is, there was a quote in a Penn Live article that our district, a member of our district had said, and it says that outsourcing us, these are big issues that are hurtful to people and could possibly be hurtful to our students as well, so it's difficult. And I just asked the board tonight just to consider every letter that you have gotten, mostly from the parents, not even just from us as staff, but I ask you to really consider what these parents are speaking, how it's going to affect their children, and you know, what could happen because of that. Like I said, it's, it's way beyond my job. I can go find another job, but these kids don't have a choice to find another school. And I think you owe it, because a lot of these children are children that have a disability or need extra support, and what you're taking away from them is way beyond the money that it costs. So thank you very much, and best to all of you.
Thank you, Brenda. Anyone else, Jason?
Not at this time, sir. I don't see anybody.
Okay. Okay, I believe we'll move on. Before we go forward, I just want to say, I just want to thank everyone who we have heard from in the community. This is a highly emotional subject, and the level of professionalism that you folks have shown is greatly appreciated, and your passion as well shown through. So I just want to thank you for that. Situations like this are, like I said, highly emotional and can lead people to do things that they would later regret, but you folks have carried yourself very well, so thank you for that. Okay, moving on, our report section. Dr. Eschbach, your superintendent report, your last one.
Well, I'm just gonna, a point of order here first. Maureen pointed out to me that you approved to pull Letter C out of the, the budget agenda, or the finance agenda, but you did not ever approve the agenda and the amended agenda, so maybe you should take care of that.
My, my bad. Okay, so, we have a motion to approve tonight's amended agenda. My apologies. Any discussion on that? Okay, Mrs. Ross?
Mr. Barnett?
Yes.
Mrs. Eichelberger?
Sorry, yes.
Mr. Hulaki?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoferter?
Yes.
Mrs. Markle?
Yes.
Dr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
Agenda approved.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Eschbach.
Well, thanks, Maureen, for pointing that out. That's.
Yeah, thank you, Maureen.
So as part of my last, my last report to the board during my career at Northern, I just wanted to thank several people. So first of all, just a big thank you to the board for all that they do, for the countless hours that they put in. These nine members and the dozens of other, of other board members that I've dealt with since I arrived eight years ago, put in just countless hours of volunteer work. They're not paid for their time. They, they really are rather underappreciated for the work that they do, and I just want to thank them for that work. Special thanks to Mr. Hulaki, probably the first contact I ever had with the Northern York County School District, was a letter that I wrote to Mr. Hulaki saying I was interested in, in the job, and I've appreciated his, his work throughout my eight years here. And also, just over the last couple of years, Mr. Seacrest and his role as board president during some very difficult times. Truly appreciate that, Ken, and appreciate your work. I want to thank our administrative team, just a fine group of, of individuals that, that work hard, that work on behalf of the students. I was just counting, of our, of our eighteen administrators, I, eleven of them were not in the position that they're in right now when I started eight years ago. So that's a significant amount of turnover. A special thanks to, to Vanjie and her work with the, the HR department, to, to Matt and Dave and to Jason Young for, for their work, Jason's work putting this budget together. It's not been a fun job, but I truly appreciate that. Special thanks to my right hand during the last eight years, and Jason Beals. You know, all of you know the, the importance he is to our school district, and I just thank him for, for his work and his support over this time. It's always good to know that you're, that somebody has your back. It's, it's great to know how many people have had my back over the years. We have a wonderful staff at, at Northern York County School District. A big shout out to our teachers, to the NYEA, Mr. Giscavige, and, and the work that, that he and I have done together. I truly appreciate the professionalism he exhibits, but the entire staff. During this ridiculous time of, of remote learning and trying to get students instructed in this environment, our staff has stepped up, from our teachers, to our aides, to our secretaries, to our custodians and cafeteria workers who are now serving over three hundred lunches a day. We just, we have an amazing staff, and, and, and finally to our students. No place I'd rather be than to be the superintendent at Northern, because, mainly because of the students, and the, the energy they bring to, to our schools, and, and the work that they do to make it a great place. This has been a, a very difficult decision for me to, to come to the conclusion that it's time for me to leave public education and to leave the, the work of a superintendent. Literally half of my career, I've been a superintendent, and this by far has been the toughest year of that, and it's not because, just because of COVID. COVID made it ten times tougher, a hundred times tougher, but it was a tough year begin, to begin with. Getting this budget passed was a huge lift, a very heavy lift, and the, the cuts to our, our programs, the cuts to our staff should not go unnoticed, but also should not be looked at as, as something that just occurred. We have been lobbying hard for many, many, many years about school finance and how schools are, are funded, and that we could not go on forever like that. I, I remember a former board member saying, what are, what are they gonna do? Let us go bankrupt? They're never, you know, they're never gonna let us go bankrupt. I'm not so sure. I'm really not so sure that there aren't some that would like to see us fail, and I will continue in my work at the state level to advocate for public education, to advocate for the leadership in public education, to make sure that we can continue to educate each and every student in our school districts, no matter what zip code they're in, and no matter whether they live in a house of affluence or in a house of poverty, we need to educate each one. I've, I've been so rewarded in my time at Northern to be a part of renovations to Diltsburg, Wellsville Elementary School, the SLC, the sale of one and a half buildings, close to two buildings. We're getting close to, to selling that second building. I've been inspired by our staff and the way they've been able to introduce a one-to-one laptop program, full-day kindergarten, our instructional coaches, the increased electives that we have, the STEM focus that we have at all three of our schools. Most importantly, I am, I'm proud and, and honored to be a part of the, the process that went forward to develop our profile of a graduate. I think by far it is the most important thing that, that we've done, and it should be a roadmap for, for you as you look to the future. It, it never says in there that life will be easy. It always says that we will have challenges that, that we have to face, and, and I thank you for your work in honoring that, that profile. Everybody has a different opinion as to what some of those Cs mean, but when it comes right down to it, when we teach our, our students how to work through the tough times in life, we, we help them to become ready to be 21st century citizens. And finally, I want to welcome, you're gonna be voting in a, a few minutes on a new superintendent. I want to welcome Mr. Steve and Kirkpatrick to Northern. Let me be the first to welcome him even before the vote. I'm just so confident in him. When I've told other people around the state who is going to be the next superintendent, based on the announcement that was made last week, I can tell you over and over again, I hear, he is such a good guy. What a good guy, what a great pick for Northern. And I couldn't be happier for Northern. I've known Steve for, for many years. I know him to be a high-quality educator who cares for his community and cares for the people that he works with, and if I had any choice in making a superintendent, in, in picking the superintendent, which I didn't, it, it would have been, Steve would have been right there as my top choice. So I wish him all the best, and, and thank you all for, for the past eight years. It has been a wonderful ride. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Eschbach, and I would just say, I, it is my hope and desire that when the next meeting that we have where we're all face-to-face, we would like to have you back and honor you properly. This is hardly the venue I would choose to honor you. So on behalf of the board, I want to thank you for your eight years of dedication, the countless hours. I know it is not an easy job. It is a very stressful job, and I just want to thank you for that. And personally, I want to thank you. Seven years ago, I came on the board, I was a deer in a headlights, and you, along with many board members, helped me along to figure this whole thing out in the last couple of years in my current position. You have made it very easy to a degree. I look forward to our monthly meeting, so I will miss that. And in closing, I hear the lovely Miss Kathy Eschbach is lurking somewhere in your basement and like to make an appearance at this point, so.
Oh, look at this. She is. She's gonna remain off-camera, apparently, but.
Morning, Kathy.
Grandma.
There she is.
Hi, Kathy.
Hello.
And I will say a huge thank you to my wife. I've often said to aspiring superintendents that they are not the, that I, that you're not the only superintendent in the house. Everybody in your, in your home becomes the superintendent and becomes, and gets the criticism and works the same hours as the superintendent. So I say thank you to my, to my beautiful wife for putting up with a superintendent for sixteen years. Like, nobody can do that. Takes a special person. Thank you.
Kathy, do you have a picture of his front yard right now?
Well, I think Mr. Jason might have that.
What do you got there, Jason?
I'm actually waiting for Megan Ross.
Megan sent them.
Okay.
I want to thank Maureen Ross and her daughter Megan for putting this little surprise for Dr. Eschbach together. Thank you very much for that.
Thanks, Maureen. I knew it wouldn't have been a, a real celebration without cake.
Eric, this is Beth. It's been a pleasure working with you while you've been, when you've been superintendent, and I'm sorry to see you go. I look forward to working with Steve in the future, but I'm sorry we're not in person to, to say goodbye, so best of luck to you.
Thanks, Beth.
Any other board members want to make a few comments while we wait for the picture?
Yeah, this is Kevin Barnett. I just would like to echo everybody's appreciation for Dr. Eschbach and all he's done, and, you know, didn't go unnoticed, and we're happy to, to have had that acquaintance and look, look forward to seeing where you go from here and wishing you the best.
Thank you, Kevin.
This is, this is Ann. I'd like to echo that as well. Dr. Eschbach, it's been an absolute pleasure working with you, and I wish you the best of luck in your new endeavor.
Thank you, Ann.
Megan emailed the pictures to Jason Beals.
I'm sorry, I, I do not have any email from, from Megan, so if it happens to come through. My Wi, my home Wi-Fi has dropped twice during this call, so I apologize to everyone on this call, and I do not see an email right now, so I apologize. There it is.
Okay.
Thanks, Eric.
Thank you. A, a nice sign. It says, "Best of luck, Dr. Eschbach. You will be missed", with some nice pictures of, of my wife and some ugly guy she's standing with.
Yeah, Dr. Eschbach, this is Mr. Hulaki. You were certainly our first choice eight years ago, and I just want to thank you for the leadership over the last eight years. It has certainly been a privilege being on the board with you as the tenth member, and I wish you the best as a not-so-far neighbor down the road.
Right. Thanks, Greg.
Okay, I think we'll move on. So, Seasonal Liaison Report, Zachary Burnick.
All right, um, all right, good evening, everybody. As far as we students go, we're all doing the best we can as we finish up these last few days of our preschool careers. Obviously, we're disappointed that we're not currently consumed with excitement for graduation, saying heartfelt goodbyes to our teachers and seeing the halls of Dural Northern High one last time, but obviously, I just want to say that we're grateful for the efforts of the administration, the board, and everyone else in the Northern community who's done the best they can to recognize and honor our great class of students. On a personal note, I just want to thank the board and the administration for giving me the opportunity to share my perspective and interact with you guys these past nine months, myself included and all of us students. We appreciate that you guys make Northern a great place that it is. I actually got your card today in the mail, so thank you for all the kind words and the thoughtfulness. I really, I really appreciated it. It was a, it was a nice surprise. And, you know, just from the board members, the administrators, to the faculty, really, it's the people who make Northern such a special place, and I'm grateful for the, to have had the opportunity to grow and learn here. And I know all the students are hopeful for what the future will bring. I got an email yesterday from the president of Notre Dame saying that they plan to have all of their students on campus in the fall. We're gonna start two weeks early. We're gonna go without a fall break and be done by Thanksgiving, which is obviously exciting news. I will see, we'll see how things work out. Obviously, a lot of, a lot of uncertainty, but I just know that for all of us, there are summer and fall look a little different. I know that we'll, we'll make the best of it, and I guess I just want to thank you guys for everything you've done for me, and it's been a great, it's been a great opportunity, so thank you.
Thank you very much, Beth, and good to watch you at Notre Dame, so we appreciated cutting the year. spending the year with you. Okay, do we have any intermunicipal reports? Okay, CAIU, Mrs. Schaper.
Our scheduled meeting is not until next Thursday, so I have nothing to report tonight.
Okay, thank you. Vote tech, Mrs. Eichelberger.
No, she had called in, and it looks like she muted herself.
She's asking, "How do I unmute?"
She's on the phone.
She said I did unmute, so.
Ask her to join, call back in, please, Alyssa.
Okay. We will move back and swing around here. Polar Bear Foundation, Dr. McLean.
Yes, tomorrow night is our next Polar Bear Foundation meeting, so report next month. What happens?
Okay. No, Alyssa?
She's got, she'll be calling back in.
Okay, we'll move on. Business Manager's Report, Mr. Young.
Yes, Mr. President, I would ask that the following checks be approved for payment: General Fund checks dated from April 16, 2020, to May 13, 2020, for check number 325795 to check 325841, and check 325843 to check 325899, in the amount of $687,385.72. General Fund Manual Checks dated May 19, 2020, for check number 325900 to check 325903, in the amount of $245,692.19. General Fund Payroll Checks dated April 17, 2020, for check number 325791 to check 325794, and check dated May 1, 2020, for check 325842, in the amount of $6,711.80. Capital Reserve Fund Check dated May 7, 2020, for check number 452, in the amount of $41,513.10. And Food Service Account Checks dated May 7, 2020, for check number 8742 to check number 8746, in the amount of $45,411.31.
Mr. President, this is Mr. Halak. I move to pay the district's bills.
This is Anne. I second.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Ross.
Mr. Barnett?
Yes.
Mrs. Eichelberger?
Yes.
Mr. Halak?
Yes.
Mrs. Hobder?
Yes.
Mrs. Markle?
Yes.
Dr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaper?
Yes.
Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Mr. President, I'd ask for acceptance of the May 2020 Treasurers' Report.
Mr. President, this is Mr. Halak. I move to accept the report.
This is Alyssa. I second.
Good motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Ross.
Mr. Barnett?
Yes.
Mrs. Eichelberger?
Yes.
Mr. Halak?
Yes.
Mrs. Hobder?
Yes.
Mrs. Markle?
Yes.
Dr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaper?
Yes.
Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And lastly, Mr. President, including the packet of reports of various accounts for the board's review.
Thank you, Mr. Young. All right, let's swing back to the Polar Bear Report. Mrs. Eichelberger.
Yes, so Vote Tech meeting was tonight, the same time as our meeting, so I wasn't able to attend.
Thank you, sorry, meant Vote Tech. All right.
Okay.
Budget and Finance, Mr. Halak.
Mr. President, I move by consent to accept the Budget and Finance Committee Report, items A, B, D, E, F, and G.
Yeah, this is Kevin. I'll second that.
Motion, a second, any discussion on those items? Hearing none, Mrs. Ross.
Mr. Barnett?
Yes.
Mrs. Eichelberger?
Yes.
Mr. Halak?
Yes.
Mrs. Hobder?
Yes.
Mrs. Markle?
Yes.
Dr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaper?
Yes.
Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I'm sorry, I missed that, Mr. President.
Item C, we need to vote on that now.
I was going to do that under New Items, but we can do that now. Okay, I move to approve the purchase agreement with Musco Sports Lighting LLC for a new lighting system at Bostic.
I second that. This is Beth.
Motion, a second, discussion on that item? Hearing none, Mrs. Ross.
Mr. Barnett?
Yes.
Mrs. Eichelberger?
No.
Mr. Halak?
Yes.
Mrs. Hobder?
Yes.
Mrs. Markle?
Yes.
Dr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaper?
Yes.
Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. All right, Curriculum Committee Report, Dr. McLean.
Yes, I move to approve by consent items A, A1 through 10. There's several new items since our committee meeting, so yeah.
This is Anne. I second.
Motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Ross.
Mr. Barnett?
Yes.
Mrs. Eichelberger?
Yes.
Mr. Halak?
Yes.
Mrs. Hobder?
Yes.
Mrs. Markle?
Yes.
Dr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaper?
Yes.
Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, I apologize. Maureen, what did we just vote on?
Curriculum.
Curriculum.
Okay. Curriculum Committee Report, Mrs. Eichelberger, sorry about that.
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to move to approve by consent, letter A1 and 2, B1 and 2, and letter C1 through 14, and letter D.
This is Anne. I second that.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Ross.
Mr. Barnett?
Yes.
Mrs. Eichelberger?
Yes.
Mr. Halak?
Yes.
Mrs. Hobder?
Yes.
Mrs. Markle?
Yes.
Dr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaper?
Yes.
And Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, we have numerous items for board action.
Okay, Mr. President, this is Mr. Halak. I move to approve the amending agreement with Questech to correct the amount for the additional technician approved in April.
Jamie, I second.
Good motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Ross.
Mr. Barnett?
Yes.
Mrs. Eichelberger?
Yes.
Mr. Halak?
Yes.
Mrs. Hobder?
Yes.
Mrs. Markle?
Yes.
Dr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaper?
Yes.
Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Mr. President, this is Mr. Halak. I move to approve the Agreement for School Age Special Education Services with Capital Intermediate Unit for the 2020-2021 school year.
This is Jamie.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Ross.
Mr. Barnett?
Yes.
Mrs. Eichelberger?
Yes.
Mr. Halak?
Yes.
Mrs. Hobder?
Yes.
Mrs. Markle?
Yes.
Dr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaper?
Yes.
Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Mr. President, this is Mr. Halak. I move to approve the Adventure-Based Academic Program Agreement with Yellow Breach's Education Center Incorporated for the 2020-2021 school year.
This is Anne. I second.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Ross.
Mr. Barnett?
Yes.
Mrs. Eichelberger?
Yes.
Mr. Halak?
Yes.
Mrs. Hobder?
Yes.
Mrs. Markle?
Yes.
This, Dr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaper?
Yes.
And Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Mr. President, this is Mr. Halak. I move to approve the Agreement for Educational Services for One Student with New Story LLC for the 2020 Extended School Year.
Mr. President, this is Patricia Schaper. I second the motion.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Ross.
Mr. Barnett?
Yes.
Mrs. Eichelberger?
Yes.
Mr. Halak?
Yes.
Mrs. Hobder?
Yes.
Mrs. Markle?
Yes.
Dr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaper?
Yes.
Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Mr. President, this is Mr. Halak. I move to approve the proposed budget resolution to adopt the 2020-2021 proposed budget, tentatively set taxes to be levied as follows: Real estate tax, mill rate 18.0481, capital tax imposed under Act 511, $5, reenactment of the 1 1/4 earned income tax at a collection rate of 3/4 of a percent, reenactment of the 1% Realty Transfer Tax at a collection rate of 1/2 a percent, reenactment of the amusement tax rate at 10% shared with the municipality, and that these taxes be tentatively adopted to finance the 2020-2021 budget, which calls for proposed expenditures, the amount of $50,730,321, and proposed revenues in the amount Significant changes to this budget include the attritional losses of professional staff in several areas, transition of full-time aides to ESS, transition of one administrative position to a contracted position, alterations of health benefits for support staff, and deferring nonessential construction initiatives for future years.
This is Mr. Rudy. I second.
We have a motion, a second, any discussions?
And, Mr. President, this is Mr. Halak. I just want to point out to the board that we have a $557,000 shortfall, so we're going to need to transfer that money from the general fund to cover the shortfall this year, so that's a significant amount of money to make up from the general fund. Irregardless of how difficult and how painful this budget has been, how emotional it's been, we're still not there.
Any other discussions? Mrs. Ross?
Mr. Barnett?
Yes.
Mrs. Eichelberger?
Yes.
Mr. Halak?
Yes.
Mrs. Hobder?
Yes.
Mrs. Markle?
Yes.
This, Dr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaper?
Yes.
Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Mr. President, this is Mr. Halak. I move to approve Jason A. Young as Treasurer of the School Board of Directors for a one-year term beginning July 1, 2020.
This is Kevin. I'll second that.
We have a motion, a second, any discussions? Hearing none, Mrs. Ross.
Mr. Barnett?
Yes.
Mrs. Eichelberger?
Yes.
Mr. Halak?
Yes.
Mrs. Hobder?
Yes.
Mrs. Markle?
Yes.
Dr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaper?
Yes.
And Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Mr. President, this is Mr. Halak. I move to approve a resolution allowing the district to reimburse capital expenditures with tax-exempt proceeds from a future borrowing.
I'll second that.
Motion, a second, any discussions? Hearing none, Mrs. Ross.
Mr. Barnett?
Yes.
Mrs. Eichelberger?
Yes.
Mr. Halak?
Yes.
Mrs. Hobder?
Yes.
Mrs. Markle?
Yes.
Dr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaper?
Yes.
And Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Mr. President, this is Mr. Halak. I move to appoint Mr. Stephen Kirkpatrick as District Superintendent for a five-year term effective on July 1, 2020, ending on June 30, 2025, and approve the employment agreement setting forth the terms and conditions of said appointment.
This is Beth. I second that.
This is Anne. I second.
Motion, a second, any discussions? Hearing none, Mrs. Ross.
Mr. Barnett?
Yes.
Mrs. Eichelberger?
Yes.
Mr. Halak?
Yes.
Mrs. Hobder?
Yes.
Mrs. Markle?
Yes.
Dr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaper?
Yes.
Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, you bear with me one second. I am signing the contract. So, as you can see, Mr. Kirkpatrick is now officially our superintendent as of July 1, and I just want to be the second one to welcome Mr. Kirkpatrick to Northern. We are very excited to have him join us, and as a board, we were, we got a glimpse of him in our interview process, and we're excited to get started. And I just wanted to offer Mr. Kirkpatrick a few moments to be seen by the rest of the Northern nation. So, Stephen, the floor is yours.
Well, thank you. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Very good. I just want to go back to that moment when Dr. Eschbach retired or announced his retirement from the superintendent's position, and I started thinking for myself about that role and investigating the district, and I quickly learned how great a district Northern is. You know, the, there's such a strong sense of community here, and the community has a great pride in the school. I know former students and families who have come, have been in the district, have been associated with the district, and just had tremendous experiences. I've actually worked with several members of the administration, and I look, they're just fantastic, and I'm going to be working with them in short order. And I learned that under Dr. Eschbach's leadership, that there's just a keen focus on student success and doing what's in the best interest of students. So, I wasn't surprised in Dr. Eschbach's parting words that he mentioned the profile of a graduate and the hard work that the district put into, into that effort. I just want to express my gratitude. I want to thank the board for giving me this opportunity and putting your trust in me. I will not let you down. I want to thank the other Northern educators and administrators and members of the school community that were part of the interview process and how welcome they made me feel. I really appreciate that. I want to thank Dr. Eschbach for leaving behind a district that is just in tremendous shape and has a very positive, student-focused culture. There are certainly big shoes to fill, so I'm humbled for that opportunity. I look forward to serving and becoming part of the Northern York School District and trading in my eagle's wings for some powerful polar bear paws. So, thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Welcome aboard. All right. Okay, Mr. Halak. Okay, Mr. President, this is Mr. Halak. I move to appoint Mr. Jason Beals as Acting Superintendent of the Northern York County School District in accordance with Section 1079 of the Public School Code of 1949, as amended for the period between June 5th, 2020 through June 30th, 2020. This appointment shall fill a vacancy in the position of Superintendent between the completion of Dr. Eschbach's term of office as Superintendent on June 4th, 2020, and the commencement of the term of Mr. Stephen Kirkpatrick on July 1st, 2020. Mr. Beal shall be paid a stipend of $1,200 for this service.
This is Pat.
This is Alyssa. I second.
Second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Ross.
Mr. Barnett?
Yes.
Mrs. Eichelberger?
Yes.
Mr. Halak?
Yes.
Mrs. Hobder?
Yes.
Mrs. Markle?
Yes.
Dr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Mr. President, this is Mr. Halak. As a result of the adopted proposed budget, I move to approve of a resolution to, one, eliminate 27 full-time aide positions effective June 30th, 2020, and, two, approve an amendment to the ESS contract to expand the contracted services to include the full-time aides formerly employed by the district effective July 1st, 2020.
This is Beth. I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Any discussions? Hearing none, Mrs. Ross.
Mr. Barnett?
Yes.
Mrs. Eichelberger?
Yes.
Mr. Halak?
Yes.
Mrs. Hobder?
Yes.
Mrs. Markle?
Yes.
Dr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Any new business? Hearing none, we will once again open the floor for recognition of the public. Anything, Mr. Beals?
No, sir, I'm not seeing anything.
Okay. Any items for future agendas? Yeah, Mr. President, this is Mr. Halak. Over the budget process we've just gone through, there have been board members that have looked for additional cost savings initiatives to consider for next year's budget. We've got, just in this year alone, a $550,000 deficit to close. And I know most of that discussion has been in executive session. Some of those items include a one-year pay freeze, a district-wide spousal exemption for health insurance, contracted services for maintenance, custodial, or food service, pretty broad-reaching. So, I would just ask that over the next few months, that the administration could give us a high-level overview of potential savings, as well as pros and cons for them, not to give us a detailed board proposal, but just to give us some information so we can continue this discussion toward next year's budget cycle. I think I've covered everything from notes from the budget cycle, but if I've missed anything that any individual board member had brought up, this would be the opportunity now just to catch up on anything I may have missed. Anyone have anything to add to Greg's list? Okay. Hearing none. Dr. Eschbach, I saw that we had something on a link for an executive session. We do not have a need for executive session tonight, do we?
I have no need for an executive session.
Okay. Then I would accept a motion for adjournment.
This is Ann. I move.
Oh, Mr. Halak, I second. Motion and a second. Any discussion? Mrs. Ross?
Sure. Mr. Barnett?
Yes.
Mrs. Eichelberger?
Yes.
Mr. Halak?
Yes.
Mrs. Hobder?
Yes.
Mrs. Markle?
Yes.
Dr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Just in closing, I just want to thank everyone. This is the end of a very long, two and a half months, meeting after meeting after meeting. I just want to thank everyone on the board and on the administration, Banji, Jason Young, Jason Beals. They were part of the search committee, and we leaned heavily on them, especially Banji, and I appreciate all that she has done in this search. So, thank you, board members. Appreciate it. Take a couple weeks to take a breath. All right. Thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.